Good evening. Today is Monday, March 4th, 2019. This is a special meeting and workshop of the Board of Education. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate, and just as for all.
We have just come from executive session and we are going to go back to executive session after our workshop, so we have not adjourned executive session. We're going to start with our initial budget presentation. Carl and Lee are going to present to the Board, and then we just have one brief business item that we'll take care of after the work, after the presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Okay, so this presentation is the first public presentation of the Board's budget for the upcoming school year, the 1920 school year. However, although this is the first public presentation, it's important for everyone to realize that Li Lu and I work on this budget starting in December. A lot of work went into what you're about to review tonight and here, and the Board is aware of many of these initiatives, be it through their work with committees, through their ongoing discussions with the district, and just paying attention to the trends and some of the goals that we're trying to accomplish. So, for the first half, I will give you a narrative, and then I will turn it over to Li Lu, who will really drill down into the financials of our presentation. So, let me begin by just, I reviewed this last month at our Board of Education meeting, but the district has established four major goals to guide our growth and development for the next four years. These goals are a result of a strategic plan committee. Twenty-three members met with our consultant Judy Wilson. We spent two full days, and we got to four goals after analyzing our survey data, student performance data, and looking at research. This is our best thinking on the goals that ought to guide the Tocco district moving forward. The first one is a social-emotional learning goal. This is a huge initiative out of New York State, and it's a nationwide initiative. There's much research behind social-emotional learning and how that impacts not only success academically, but success in life. So we feel this is a major goal, and we support it, and you will see that the budget also supports us working towards this goal. The second one is about diverse learning. Diverse learning means students who come from different socioeconomic backgrounds, different ethnic backgrounds, students with special needs, high-achieving students. We wanted it to encompass all types of students, or students that are average students, working towards growth and development. We wanted a goal that encompasses all of that, and really at the basis of this one is good data analysis. You need to know where someone is, you need to set high expectations, and then support them in moving forward. The third goal is contemporary teaching and learning. Everybody that pays attention to the job market understands that science, engineering, technology, computer software, these are the jobs of the future. Certainly, there are still traditional jobs that will be very desirable in the future, but the growing fields are where we would like to steer our learning and development going forward. We are poised to really tackle this goal head-on, especially with Cottle. We have a new STEAM classroom that the community has supported through a capital project. Right now, we're on schedule and hoping that that new STEAM lab will be open by February of 2020. It's exciting because we need to capture the curiosity and the imagination of our students at a young age. We do a great job with our secondary science programs, but we recognize that the elementary school is where it needs to all start, and exciting stuff will happen there. The fourth goal is professional learning. We do a good job with our PD, but there's always room to get better, and the budget does support professional learning. But the committee thought it was important enough, I don't think you would want to go to a physician who hasn't been current or trained on the latest procedures in surgery. Teachers need to continue to learn and grow and develop their expertise. There are new techniques and new technology and new research all the time. We need to support that, so the group of 23 community members really believe that professional learning deserves its own goal. It does support the other three, but they thought it was important enough to have it singled out. Now, our district-wide budget objectives, some key positions and programs that the administrators and in analyzing the community feedback, we believed was important to include and propose in this year's budget to the Board of Education. The first is to create a Guidance Council Social Worker position to serve students and families in grades K through 12. There is a new requirement, and this is not about minimum compliance, but there is a new requirement out of state ed where we need to deliver guidance and instruction to all elementary classrooms in grades K through 5. We envision this position providing that direct instruction in classrooms to help students developmentally acquire the skills that we would like them to in the area of SEL. We also believe there's a greater need for a counselor who is able to go out and support people, potentially do home visits, and connect them with the many, many resources that are available throughout Westchester County. We pay high taxes living in Westchester, and there is an abundance of resources available that many people are not aware of and don't know how to access. So we do see the person in this position also working with our families and our students directly, and it would be a K-12 position. The next bullet is about implementing additional district-wide SEL, social-emotional learning programs and training. We have a committee right now who is meeting up at Putnam Northern Westchester Bowses and being trained on this. Dr. McDonald is leading that particular committee. It has administrators and teachers. This committee is seriously looking at a program called Ruler. It's at a Yale University. It's an evidence-based SEL program. Some districts have adopted it in our area and nationwide. Yale is one of the most respected hospitals, children's hospitals and psychiatric hospitals in the nation, or possibly even the world. Their research is second to none, and this program is something that we believe may be a good fit, although we haven't made a firm commitment yet, but we do want a budget for the probability that we will adopt an evidence-based program for the district. The next one is increased district-wide PD. Again, that is aligned with the goal. We'll get to the dollar amounts on these later, but that is in there. Also, we have a need, our desktop computers. We do, although wireless is what we are on the majority of the time, we still rely on desktop computers for our staff, our business offices, our teaching staff. There is one in every room. They are 10 years old. They are on Microsoft 7, Windows 7. That is being phased out by Microsoft, excuse me, and it'll no longer be supported and no longer be secure. We've stretched these computers, so we are going to propose that we replace all the computers throughout the district through an IPA, an installment payment agreement, which is over five years, and I think Lee will get into a little more detail on that later. You may have heard that we have a district-wide safety committee that has met twice this year. We also have school, individual school building safety committees. At every level, there is support for a school resource officer. I've met with our town supervisor, and we have a draft of an intermunicipal agreement. Also, Eastchester may be considering this as well, and we are hopeful that if the budget is supported, and this is really up to the Board, that in September or shortly after, we would be able to implement a school resource officer for the district for grades K through 12. It is much more than just someone here to protect us. We would get into teaching. A lot of our students are interested in careers in law enforcement. We envision someone potentially running a club for those students, maybe teaching some classes, providing instruction, and really building a relationship and being part of our school community. The safety committee also discussed the morning traffic duty that we really started this year. It wasn't budgeted for, but we were being responsive to concerns in the community. The traffic, our enrollment has gone up. I think more people are driving, probably bigger cars, SUVs and that sort of thing. But the traffic really, really was a challenge, and we thought we needed to do something in the morning. We also welcome a police presence, so we made an arrangement with the Eastchester PD. They do an hour of traffic supervision at the middle high school every day and an hour of traffic supervision at Cottle every day. It has dramatically improved traffic flows. It is something that we've been analyzing, and we think it is something that we should maintain, and therefore it is included in this year's budget, and it is one of my proposals. Also, last year, Lee and I analyzed the hours of security monitors throughout the district. Overall, year-over-year, there was a 28% increase. We added some after-school time. We don't do 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. We don't cover everything. However, we do have supervision. Cottle, for example, that has a lot of exciting PTA programs, the task program. These are valued programs. It is busy down there. We do have a security person after school hours. So that, I do recommend that we maintain in this budget. It's working out very nicely, and we have a high-quality monitor staff that are very dedicated. The next one is maintaining all co-curricular and athletic programs that were added in 1819. This is not an increase, but we've added a number of programs. They are really going well. There are music, art, GEO at Cottle, various examples, and we do want to maintain each and every one. The other objectives, and I put them on a separate slide, is just to continue to provide our community with a transparent and thorough budget process. This is an ongoing objective. This is a very important process. I think we've worked hard to build up trust. We've been very, very fiscally responsible in this district. We've never pierced the allowable tax levy. We've always remained within that levy. We've been able to enhance, add program, add staffing, accommodate a growing enrollment, staying within the allowable tax gap. So that is the last bullet, and those are the summary of objectives for the year. The next slide looks at class sizes. Tocco has a strong commitment to maintaining desirable class sizes. I've been here 16 years, and that commitment remains strong. So we are responding to that desire, and the research certainly supports desirable class sizes as far as student learning and achievement. What I have on the left side of your screen, you will see current average class sizes down at the elementary school and how many sections per grade level. You see kindergarten 22, first grade 24. That is a bit high. That enrollment jumped up after the school year started, but we did start a bit high. 19 in grade 2, 21 in grade 3, 19 in grade 4, 22 in grade 5. Other than the first grade, I think you have very desirable class sizes. The proposal for next year, we are right now projecting, I want to emphasize it is a projection at kindergarten. We never know what will happen. Sometimes families move in and register kindergarten children over the summer. Right now, compared to previous years, we are a bit lower at this time. So we track it closely, but right now we project 80 kindergarten students for September. They would be in four sections. That would be 20 per class. First grade, 22. Then that large first grade this year that is moving to second grade, we are going to increase and add a section. So it'll go from four sections to five, and you will have 19 students, very desirable. In grade 3, 19; in grade 4, 21. Grade 5 is a bit higher. However, the students are older, and when you start to get to those middle school years, having mid-20s is something that is not unheard of. In fact, it's actually very common throughout top Westchester districts. Looking specifically at Cottle, we are, as I said earlier, adding, we're building a new STEAM program, and it's very exciting, but we need to have a STEAM teacher. What we envision, and we did a lot of research on this, we visited other schools to look at best practices and model programs, but what we envision is a teacher who directly provides instruction to students. Every student in grade 2 through 5 going to the new STEAM lab, doing hands-on, project-based learning activities, but in addition to that, the teacher collaborating with other teachers. We'd like to implement it in September, although the new space will not be open, but we envision the instruction happening within the current classrooms, and then when the new STEAM room is open, we will be able to do so much more. We also want to save some time in the person's schedule to provide instructional technology coaching for teachers. So we are looking for a true expert. You will see later in the budget line that we're going a little higher than a starting teacher salary because we would like someone with experience, and this is a field where we believe we need to attract someone with a competitive salary. Next, we have been thoughtful, Dr. McDonald working with Mr. Marash, about the materials and the supplies. Will there be robotics? The answer is most likely yes. That is something that is a must. Things like coding, things like computer technology, projects. The middle school I watched, students building models of DaVinci's. They took DaVinci's drawings and built models of catapults and things like that. So there will be a lot of hands-on. Young children are naturally curious. We need to capture that curiosity at a young age, so this will be an incredibly engaging and exciting program. Also, I mentioned earlier, implement the developmental school guidance counseling instruction. Add that to every grade in the Cottle Elementary School with that new position. Also, we have a need for additional adaptive phys ed. It is only a .2. That is for children with special needs that need some modification to their phys ed program. The next is diversity club. Couple of years ago, we ran two sessions. This year, we only budgeted for one, but the program is thriving. The need is there for an extra club, I believe. I mean, I guess I shouldn't classify it as a need, but when you see what's going on with this program, I think they deserve a second section. Also, more in the budget to support SEL and curriculum alignment initiatives. And I spoke about that earlier with the Ruler program and the work that we're doing researching Yale's program. Next, the middle school level. Once again, I show 1819 current class sizes and grade level numbers. We're projecting for next year would be in grade 6, 22 students in four sections. For grade 7, approximately 24 students in four sections. And then in grade 8, 25 students in four sections. Grade 8 will be the largest middle school class next year. For the middle school, we're adding math labs. There is a transition from Cottle to grade 6. Cottle spends an average of about an hour and 10 minutes on math instruction daily. At the middle high school, we're in 48-minute periods. So when you add up every day, maybe 15 or 20 minutes less of math, multiply that times 180 school days, there's an awful lot of instructional time that, when you compare one year grade 5 to grade 6. We'd like to add labs, to add a bit more instructional time to help children make that transition from 5th to 6th. We did it a few years back. We saw good results. We thought with the common core curriculum, and we've had a lot of success with our math program at Cottle, that curriculum, we believe that the students had such a strong foundation that they would make the transition, but Mr. Stiefel is noticing that they need some additional instructional time to cover all the topics. So that is in this budget. Also, I spoke about this just a moment ago, but the STEAM courses in grades 6, 7, 8 are fantastic. It's the first year. We certainly recommend maintaining them. The students are doing engineering, robotics, coding, digital ethics, renewable energy, situational problem solving. When you visit these classes, it is amazing to see the high level of engagement. This is a perfect alignment with what we're planning for Cottle in the area of STEAM. We have also three other new courses this year. Geography in grade 6 and 8 and world events, but also in grade 7, we added a literature course. We'd like to maintain all of them. Also, our middle school principal, Mr. Stiefel, has proposed adding GEO advisors for each grade level, so we have one position in the middle school. He envisions a lot more exciting, hands-on activities and community service-type things, so he would like to have a GEO at every grade level working with the grade level. Also, this is something that we've done for many years, but it's not a given, especially during difficult financial times, but we would like to maintain late bus transportation. We offer, as you know, after-school extra help. Many districts don't. Every teacher in the middle high school provides one hour of after-school tutoring, and to allow or enable all students to take advantage of that, we would like the Board to consider maintaining that late bus. The high school enrollment, I broke it down differently just because they're not in grade level sections. There's so many different choices of courses. But just looking year-over-year, you can see the numbers across the entire grade level. High school enrollment's going up next year. This year, we're at 287. Next year, we're projecting 307. And we've really just moved all those numbers up. And for 8th grade, there's always a small percentage of students. It varies year-to-year, but that do choose to attend private school, and we did adjust for what we project will be entering the high school in grade 9. The high school has, right now, currently 12 AP courses. They are listed here. We're proposing maintaining all of them. Some are filled to capacity. Others have relatively low numbers compared to some other districts, but Tocco is small. And if we've been maintaining, if we have only 10 students that are interested in a particular class, we have been running those courses. We made a commitment years ago. There was a time where we were down to four APs during difficult financial times, and we found that to be unacceptable. So we've built them up over time, and we'd like to maintain this next year. That's what this budget accomplishes. Excuse me. Some highlights for the high school. This is really enrollment-driven, but we need one section more of chemistry. We want to keep those numbers in the labs manageable. Also, one section of global history honors is needed just based on enrollment. Enhancements, we'd like to implement two new elective courses. One is architecture, and the other is actually through a grant. It's being developed through a grant that Dr. McDonald obtained, and it's digital art. We also have students expressing interest in some other areas. We are analyzing the schedule, and if we can do more, we will do more, but these two, we are very confident we could do, and we'd like to recommend them for the budget. Also, in the area of electives, we'd like one additional section of strings. Not a new program, but a growing program and a thriving program. So we have more students moving from middle to high school. This program started years ago at the elementary school. Tocco, many years ago, never had a strings program, so we built this up, and it's doing well. In fact, for those who served on the Strategic Planning Committee, the surveys overwhelmingly pointed to this program as a positive. We heard it over and over from parents, from students. Lastly, three more extracurricular clubs. One is being piloted this year, which is the Audio-Visual Club, being run by Mr. Trehe. The other is also being piloted this year, Advanced Strings Ensemble by Mr. Duchateau. The Pioneer League is for children with special needs, to give them the ability to compete athletically. Mr. Spatola has brought this idea. It wasn't budgeted for, but we did add it as a pilot this year, but we expect to maintain it next year. A summary of the staff proposals district-wide. First, again, that Guidance Counselor position, K-12, also preferably with social work certification and background. A school resource officer, grades K through 12. A STEAM and technology coaching position for Cottle. A .2 adaptive phys ed teacher, and just .2 for those who are not aware, that is like one period per day. That's what that equates to. A .2 math teacher at the middle school for math labs. A .2 global history honors teacher, enrollment-driven, at the high school. A .2 chemistry teacher at the high school, enrollment-driven. A .2 digital art teacher, that's one period, at the high school. And a .2 strings music teacher at the high school. This year, we piloted girls' modified lacrosse. Next year, in the budget, we would like to have girls' modified JV lacrosse. Lee will show you later, we're not raising the overall athletics budget. There was some horse trading here. It's budget-neutral, so programs that maybe did not run due to maybe a lack of interest at a particular grade level, there's a strong interest, and I think it'll be a growing program. That two hours of morning police traffic duty, we'd like to maintain it. And then the last one is at Cottle. This is an approximate, the 8,000 square feet number for the new wing. We need to maintain that and keep that space immaculate. It will be magnificent when it opens, so we do believe we need at least one additional cleaner position added to our maintenance staff. The last slide are things that we debated, we deliberated, and we believe were important enough to bring to the Board's attention. However, they are expensive, and Lee did not include them in the budget, and you will not see this in the numbers. Maybe when, after Lee presents, maybe we can talk about these after you see all the math, then maybe we can go back and talk about these, but the first one is a recommendation for five occupational education placements at Southern Westchester Bowses. The campus is up in Valhalla. It is very impressive. It offers things such as automotive. There is a TV studio. There's a commercial kitchen for those who are interested in culinary, and many more. There are many programs. There's cosmetology, a lot of really good programs for students who, at this point in their lives, are not considering college and considering a trade. There are many, many good careers there. Small districts like Tocco simply can't offer those experiences. So these students would still pursue a Regents diploma, but also get training in various trades. I think electrician is another trade, carpentry. So there are things that we simply can't provide. It is expensive. It's not just the tuition, it's the transportation, and we researched it many years ago. You cannot, there was this idea that maybe we can say, we'll pay the tuition if you can drive up there. As a school district, by law, we have to provide the transportation. It almost is the same as the tuition cost. All right? And Lee can speak to that a bit more. So that would be $150,000 for five spots. And we could talk about maybe reducing that and considering less if the Board wishes to do so. The next one has, these were also discussed at the PPLT level. There's been a lot of input and a lot of thought in these. There's a recommendation from PPLT committees as well as the administration to go back to a one-loop bus system. So currently, we run five buses. Michelle, feel free to jump in because I know you're knowledgeable of this. And Lee, please help me, you're in charge of transportation, but I believe if whatever we pay for one bus annually, we can run that bus all day long throughout the school day. So we can have it make 20 trips if we chose to do so. So several years ago, I want to say at least five or six years ago, we analyzed it, and we developed a double-loop system where some buses drop off students earlier and then go back out and do a second round, pick up kids, bring them back. It is a cost saver. You see the number of 175,000. If we were to add three more buses, it would drive up our budget by 175,000. It's a bit of an inconvenience. The earliest students are picked up, I believe, at 6:50 a.m. That is early for high school students. They arrive here. We do have to pay some cost for supervision. Many of them come up here to the library. It's not a terrible thing, except that it's early. They have a comfortable space, but it is incredibly early. The concern out of the elementary school is if you have a six-year-old child who's focused all day long, expending all that energy to focus on learning, and either at the beginning of the day or the end of the day, they're in an auditorium, a noisy auditorium. It's too noisy for them to focus on any meaningful homework or reading or learning, but then also, they can't run around. It's an auditorium, so they must sit. And there's a concern about that being good for a young child developmentally. Children need to move. The research supports that. However, and then the other thing is, we believe a lot more parents are dropping off because they don't like either that their child needs to be picked up early and wait, or their child at the end of the day may have to stay for an extra 20, 30 minutes. And this neighborhood, I think I mentioned this earlier, it simply wasn't designed for heavy traffic flow. We're landlocked. We have a country club behind us. This residential area really, really is not designed for traffic, and we have had complaints, particularly in the afternoon, about the heavy traffic in this residential area. So this would be a wonderful thing to do, but you do have to look at that price tag. It is expensive. And I think many years ago, we looked at that number, and we said, wow, how many more educational things could we do? How many more creative, you know, in the arts and clubs? And that's when that decision was made. And that's when that decision was made. But I did feel it was important to bring it back to you. The other is, to just bring some of our communications up to the 21st century, there are two signs, and they were donated many years ago by our generous PTA, but there's new technology where we can, you know, basically keep signs updated, digital signs, they're expensive. That's an approximate, I want to emphasize that, but we'd like to have two digital signs. People do pay attention. Signage is still effective, and I think maybe it is time to upgrade them. Most schools in the area do have digital signs, and I think parents value it. So that is the end of my presentation. I'd like to invite Lee Lu up, and bear with me one second while I switch screens here. Lee, I believe we have your presentation here.
Right in the middle.
There we go. Okay. Who's that? I think you're good, Lee.
Good evening. Okay, so the next portion of our presentation, we will talk about what these things, what all the things that we offer as a district will cost, and how we will attempt to pay for them. And just as a preface, I've met over the past three, four months with all the principals, the assistant principals, the directors, Mr. Albano, and we've gone over all the budget initiatives as well as the maintenance of our ongoing program to see what we want to place in our budget. We discussed various alternatives and we looked at what things cost, and we had lots of discussions about what to place in and out of the budget. I've met with the Budget Advisory Committee to start a review of what we are looking at financially with our budget as well as our finances in the district. And at this point in time, this is our proposed budget to the Board of Education. Just as a preface, we are still under the New York State tax cap. That was instituted by the governor, Governor Cuomo, in 2011. And this year, he is talking about making it a permanent part of the tax, the educational code. There's still some discussion back and forth with requests for modifications to the way it's calculated, but currently it's still calculated the same way it has been calculated all these years. It applies to all districts in the state, and it limits the growth in property taxes that school districts can levy. The way we can increase our tax levy that we raise from our taxpayers is by two growth factors that the state provides us with. And that is the allowable growth factor and the tax base growth factor. So the allowable growth factors really are inflationary increase for our tax levy. And the way the law is structured, we are allowed to raise CPI or 2%, whichever is lower. So for 2019, 20, the allowable growth factor is 2% because the year-over-year change in the Consumer Price Index is 2.44 to date. So we can't go over 2%. 2% is lower, so that is our tax levy limit. The second growth factor that we use for our tax cap is the tax base growth factor, which is really the brick-and-mortar change in properties that we see throughout the school district. It's new buildings, it's improvements to buildings, it's any changes in our tax surgiaries in the district, and it gives, and it's calculated by the state. It varies from year to year. And there's usually a lag in terms of new building, and then when we see the change in the growth factor. Last year, we had 1.03, I believe it was 1.03. This year, we have 1.0054. So it's gone down a bit. So if we look at those two factors, and just to get a rough estimate of what our tax levy limit could be next year, if we multiply those two factors together, 1.0054 times the 1.02 tax cap, that would give us a 2.55% increase. However, there are some exclusions and various other parts of a complex formula that the state takes a look at. It takes out pilots, which are payments in lieu of taxes. It asks us to remove debt payments and capital outlays, so that we really are calculating the growth factor just on our actual budget costs and not our debt costs. So when we take out all those various exclusions and then put them back in for our estimates for next year, we will find that our maximum allowable tax levy increase that the district is permitted at this point in time, based on our current budgeting, to raise the tax levy would be 2.22%, which is what we can do by having a simple majority vote by the taxpayers and residents of the district, and that would be a 50% plus one vote to approve that. Here's the complex formula that the state provides us with, and if you run through all the numbers, as you can see, and there is the 1.0054, and then we subtract in and out the pilots, we subtract in and out our capital outlays, we multiply by 1.02, you'll see that we come down to a total dollar amount of $28,530,052, which is 2.22% increase over last year's tax levy. And that's an increased maximum allowed of $620,000. Some people will ask, and I want to just reiterate, that if we stay below the tax levy limit, that a homeowner would be eligible for the property tax credit relief, which is now a check that's provided by New York State. So if a homeowner lives in a school district that complies with the tax cap, and they receive either the basic or enhanced star exemption, and they have an income of under $275,000, and they've paid property taxes in the prior year, they would get a check for the property tax relief from the state. And the proposed budget that you'll see tonight is compliant, based on the assumptions that are in the budget. So if we look at our initial expenditures, based on our current staff, our contractual obligations that we roll over to next year, our increases that we're anticipating in various areas of the budget, as well as the debt service that we have to continue to pay and other items, we would propose a budget of $35,532,700. And that is an increase of 4.43% budget-to-budget. The main drivers of that increase, which is about $1.5 million budget-to-budget, is, as you can see, and has Mr. Albano just reiterated earlier, the guidance counselor social worker of about $120,000. The STEAM teacher plus startup materials for the STEAM class of about $160,000. The .6 FTE, which is the three teachers at the 2.2 periods per day at about $60,000. Professional development is about a $70,000 increase. The SRO, the school resource officer, is about $150,000. Traffic control, maintaining that traffic control is $27,000. Pensions are going up to about $164,000. Health benefits, we are seeing a significant raise in the rate for health insurance, as well as additional employees, and that's going up about $330,000. And I'm proposing to reduce the transfer to capital. Last year, we placed $100,000 in our budget for a transfer to capital to do capital improvements around the district. Next year, as we're doing a large capital project, and I think many of our needs will be addressed in the capital project, and we'll also reduce our ability to do many more projects because we will be ongoing in the current, the new capital project. So I'm recommending a reduction in that transfer to capital in half to $50,000. On the revenue side of the budget, we are recommending, right now, a 2.20% increase in the allowable tax levy, which would raise about $615,000. Also, we're seeing increases in tuition revenues in the district, and although I tend to be very conservative as to how we budget for those, because students can come in and out at any time, and we don't want to fall short in our projections, I still feel, based on the number of new students that we've seen in this category, that it would be prudent to raise that area about $157,000. And in the area of state aid, we're not seeing much at all in the governor's proposed budget. We have not yet seen the legislature's proposed budget, and they generally tend to increase over what the budget, over what the governor recommends. But right now, our increase in state aid is only about $91,000, based on the governor's proposed budget. So this is what our initial revenue budget looks like. And as you can see in the third column, the 1920 proposed budget would take that 2.20% increase in property taxes to $28,525. We're increasing slightly our pilots and sales tax line. We haven't seen a lot of growth there. In charges for services, I did raise that a bit, about 13.5% to account for increased students that we're seeing. On the total other revenues line, which is interest income, which is going up nicely over the last year, as well as charges for services and rentals around the district, I raised that about 34% to $247,000. The total state aid, again, is going up about $91,000 to almost $3 million. And then I'm proposing the way we can close the budget gap, which we'll take a look at on the next slide, by using some of our reserves. We have an ERS reserve that we've started the last few years that we can use to pay for some of our pension increases, and then the remainder would have to be paid for by the appropriated fund balance to balance the budget. And as you can see, again, that is the $35,532, about a $1.5 million increase. So where are we? The expenditure budget is proposed at $35,532,700. The baseline revenue budget without appropriations is $33,518,74, which leaves a budget gap of $2,016,000. So other ways we might close that budget gap, and we'll look to see if we, if some of those materialize going forward. We may see additional state aid from the legislature's budget, and if there is additional state aid, we can look to either lower appropriations or any other line item. Another way we could close the budget gap would be to reduce expenses, or, as I've shown initially in the revenue budget, we can use reserves to balance the budget. Just to review where and how we've been using reserves over the last few years, 2019, 20, to balance the budget would be $1.9 million from unreserved fund balance, plus $100,000 from the ERS reserve. The year before, this current year, we proposed using about $1,438. And then, as you can see, it's been going up over the last few years, but back in 2015, 16, it was again higher. And the rationale for doing it this way, it does avoid cuts to balance the budget, it preserves programs and reduces any negative impact to students in the reduction of the program. In terms of a history of the fund balance, you can see that the changes to the appropriated fund balance in the first column, over time, the change to fund balance, we ran some large surpluses in these middle years, but because I have been tightening the budget, those surpluses are shrinking, and we are showing fewer surpluses, so we are now even looking at possible reductions to fund balance at the end of the year, if any surpluses that we run don't cover the amount that we need to appropriate. What we still don't know for next year is the number of tax surgiary petitions that may come to the district that we'll have to cover from our tax surgiary reserve, as well as the exact staffing levels that we might need if we see a large influx in students registering over the summer, or new special education students with IEPs that we are by law mandated to meet. And anything else that may come up that we're not anticipating at this point in time. Here's a history of our tax levy and our budget-to-budget increases. As you can see, over time, we've been somewhat flat the last two years, we've been in the same range. But our five-year average is 1.61 for tax levy increase, and our five-year average budget-to-budget is 2.35. And that tends to reflect the fact that we have seen enrollment growth over this time period, so there has been a large need for more staff in the district. Graphically, that's the way it looks. We're seeing still some slight increases in our enrollment, and the last few years, we've been meeting that with larger budgets and budget-to-budget increases. The first bar on the left in the lighter color is the budget change, and the darker bar is the tax levy percentage change. And then these are the dates remaining for our budget calendar. In two weeks, on March 18th, we'll do another budget review with the Board of Education. Again, on April 8th, we will do another budget review. April 23rd, which is a Tuesday, the board will adopt a budget. On May 13th, we'll have a final public hearing on the adopted budget. And then Tuesday, May 21st, we will have a budget vote and a trustee election. And again, we have the two districts in the community, District A and District B. Thank you.
Okay, thank you both, Carlin Lee, a lot to take in. The board was given this presentation yesterday, and really, this is the first time we're discussing it together and going over it. So none of us have had the opportunity yet to ask any questions, and again, a lot to take in, right? I mean, very exciting, and a lot of new programming and new staffing, and a lot of really exciting things. Of course, what we're concerned about is, are we able to go and be able to sustain that year over year? So it looks like we have a healthy fund balance now, and my concern always is, you know, what is it going to be three years from now? So is, I think the very first question, because that's the first thing that comes to my mind, is there a way to show us some type of projection? I mean, you know, we see here already, you know, increase in healthcare, increase in pension contribution. Are there some things that we can estimate over a three-year period to have a look? Because the last thing we would want to do would be put forward all these exciting things, only to find in a couple of years that we can't afford it. So I do think it would help to see a projection of at least a few years out.
Well, as you know, the treasurer in our district has been out on leave the last three months, but she's back today for a short time. And what we are doing is, in the next two weeks, I've asked her to work on a fund balance projection for this year, as well as, I will certainly put together something to see what the next two years going forward would look like.
That would be very nice.
And I can present that at the next board meeting, if that's all right.
That would be great. So let's just go around. Anyone have questions about, how about, you know, the district-wide objectives, the drivers, the highlights? Any questions for Carl and what he's recommending, and then for Lee on how we're going to pay for it?
I have a few. Go ahead. With your presentation, Carl, I just have a couple of quick questions or clarifications. First of all, everything that's been proposed, as Michelle said, is really exciting, and all good stuff, all really good stuff. It's excellent. When you mentioned the, you touched upon the SCL program from Yale that you're considering adopting, and you mentioned something about evidence-based program. Could you just explain what that means a little bit? I know it's not really, I just missed in the program a little more.
Sure, sure. The program is the ruler program out of Yale University. Now, the one really, if you want detail about it, we, Dr. McDonnell could not be here tonight. She's leading a committee of administrators and teachers that I think they've gone four times to Putnam, Northern Westchester Bosse's, with various other districts. And they are learning about this particular program as well as others. So it fits within the framework, the castle framework for social-emotional learning. And the research is that becoming more self-aware, managing, regulating your emotions actually helps students academically. And also, learning how to navigate social situations, make better choices. Now, this stuff, Peter, we do a lot of it. So for example, in our health curriculum, in our, even in our academic areas, you know, there is SCL instruction integrated throughout. But this particular program, my understanding, and I have not been trained in it, and I'm not an expert in it by any stretch of the imagination, but I did do some reading on it. It comes with a training component for your staff. There's a lot of intense PD and staff training. And then, of course, there's the direct instruction with students. And it's developmentally appropriate, it starts from K through 12. So again, it's there is SCL instruction integrated throughout. But this particular program, my understanding, and I, I have not been trained in it, and I'm not an expert in it by any stretch of the imagination, but I did do some reading on it. It comes with a, a training component for, for your staff, there's a lot of intense PD and staff training, and then, of course, there's the direct instruction with students. And it's developmentally appropriate, it starts from K through twelve. So, so again, it's based on research out of Yale University, we certainly can do a more in-depth presentation, if you'd like.
It's not really appropriate for tonight. I was actually just, the trigger word you said, and I just wanted to get a clarification, was, was evidence-based, like what that means in, in terms of SCL. Does that mean evidence-based being in terms of the child themselves, or?
It's in terms of, there's research out of Yale University that supports that this will, will help students.
Okay, that should do my better.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted a clarification of that.
Exactly.
And then, the other thing I wanted to ask about, is whether or not, with regards to the additional SRO, or the SRO acquisition, which I think is a great idea, and maintaining the, the traffic assignments, is, is there any room for negotiation there with our police department, in terms of the amount of money that's being spent? I know I brought it up to the safety committee, I know it's, I'm just curious, because I know, at the end of the day, it's, it should be more like a partnership, I mean, we're part of the, the police department's area responsibility, we're all taxpayers, it, it just seems to me that there should be some room for negotiation there, in terms of what the city themselves, or the town themselves, can absorb some of this cost. Has there been any talk about that, any negotiation, or are we just paying sticker price, as we walk into the showroom here?
Well, two things. So, there is a rate for, an hourly rate for police officers, so the traffic supervision in the morning, we just play an, pay an hourly rate. The town has kept that rate flat for as far back as I can remember. This is the first year they, they increased it, and, like everyone else, their, their expenses are going up, health, health is going up disproportionately to everything else. So, so they, I think they've been very reasonable. I, I, we were just told that they have a new rate. I know they're consistent with that rate, Eastchester uses, we share the same police department, they use them for events. So, I guess your question is, is it something that we can negotiate? I don't see much room for negotiation, simply because I, they're not making a profit, they are simply passing on their expense to us.
Right.
The police do, and I, I must say this, they do an awful lot, they're here regularly, you know, they are here, their response time, Peter, as you know, is, is, is almost instantaneous, you know, when we need their help. But I think they definitely view this tra, traffic supervision as an extra.
Yeah, my, my comment was really more directed towards the SRO.
Yes, RRO.
More than the tra, the traffic. I, I get the traffic, it's just an hour-to-hour thing.
Exactly.
But the SRO, to me, you know, is, you know, we're investing in a, well, the, the town is investing in a, another officer, essentially, is what's going to happen, right?
Yes, yes.
And that's essentially a twenty-to-twenty-five-year investment. So, it kind of seems to me that we're taking that entire investment on our, on our own, through, through the cost of the one, the one-fifty or so, which is basically the cost of the officer's entire salary, and benefits, and so forth.
Well, it's not, to clarify, Peter, it's not, it's not the entire, so Supervisor Calavita and I met and spoke about this, and, an officer, don't quote me on this, but I believe they work approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-eight days.
Right, just the school year we're paying for.
We, we only need them for one-hundred-and-eighty-four days. So, I, I think the, the, you know, the shared, or the cooperative arrangement here, from the town, is that they will absorb the cost for those extra days, probably use the officers in the summer, the summers can get quite busy, and I'm sure some other officers will take vacations. But, they're giving us a prorated, Supervisor Calavita was, was pretty adamant about, you know, that, what the deal would be, a prorated daily rate, you know, times one-hundred-and-eighty-four, but that is their base pay, and also their benefits package. Lee and I, Lee, the placeholder was one-hundred-and-fifty thousand in the budget.
Right.
Lee and I are being conservative there, it may not be that high. The, the other thing is, we, we've talked about, you know, there is a big difference between a rookie police officer and a veteran. You know, the, the committee spoke about it, I think Michelle may have been part of that discussion, where we think ideally, it would be someone with some years of experience, you know, not someone fresh out of the academy, but someone with some years behind them. Doesn't have to be someone, you know, doesn't have to be a thirty-year veteran, but we would like to see some experience, and we did ask that we would be able to at least, you know, interview and have a selection process, and have a say in who that officer is. So, I, you know, I, I certainly, I, I do have, I'm trying to get on Supervisor Calavita's calendar as a follow-up to this, so I'm certainly happy to go back and ask if there is something else we could do.
Is this, is this deal on par with what other districts pay for SROs? I mean, because I've heard, on that basis, on any evidence, just what I've heard, I've heard that some districts, you know, have like a fifty-fifty type of ratio. I get the, the prorating rate, I get that, and that's, that's good, but we still are paying a hundred percent of that, of that officer's cost for those days. If that's the, if that's the protocol, that's pretty much standard, and then I guess we don't have much, much to negotiate there, but, in terms of, but is that normal? Do other districts do something else, you know, in our area?
You know, Peter, we did, it wasn't so formal, but with my superintendent's group, because a lot of districts have moved to an SRO model, we, we did survey everyone, but it was more verbal, and there were a number of different models out there for payment, but I will tell you, this is not out of line. You know, I, I think a few districts out there have maybe a little bit of a better deal. I think one in particular, they only pay the base, and the, the town, or the village, whatever it is, picks up the, the benefits, the benefits.
That's kind of what I was thinking. To me, I was thinking a prorated base pay would be fair, and, and then the town pays for the, the, the benefits, being that it's, it's, it's an officer for, for a whole career. That's just my, my, my personal opinion, and, and again, I don't know what is, what is being normally done out there, but.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, what, what we can do is, Lee, we, we can make a request through the data warehouse, we could, we could put out a formal survey, to see what the arrangements are for everyone, get an update, because I know a lot, a lot of districts have recently implemented.
Yeah, I just kind of feel like, you know, Lee, Mr. Calavita sees it this way too, is that it's not just, it shouldn't just be something that's looked at as a school's benefit, it is, it is an investment in the community, right? And we all are taxpayers, not just school taxpayers, but town taxpayers, these are our children, our most, you know, precious commodity. So it's not, it shouldn't just be, in my mind, just a back-and-for, they should be, the town should see it as a, as a good investment in policing as well, is kind of, is kind of my view of it, but, anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. And then, I won't take a little time, I have one more question. The, the STEM teacher, technology coach position that you're proposing, just so I understand, will there be individual classes that that person teaches, or is that person going to provide instruction that's integrated into the existing classes that are already taking place, like augmenting the science class, augmenting, you know, whatever class is being taken, or are they going to teach their own class?
Both. So, the schedule that Mr. Morash has developed, and again, we, they researched some models, every child in grades two through five would go to the new STEAM classroom for direct instruction with the new teacher, once per week. However, the learning wouldn't stop there, it would be a collaborative, where in the classroom, there would be follow-up and related instruction to the work that is happening in the maker space, or, well, I'm calling it maker space, but STEAM, STEAM classroom. The teacher also, then, would push in and co-teach with, with the classroom teachers. And our thinking behind this is, most elementary teachers do not have an extensive science, technology, engineering background. We have many that are strong in math and ELA, those are the primary subjects in, in elementary, but, you know, that, that science and engineering and technology area, our universities, you know, for elementary teachers, they, they don't receive extensive training in that area, so we're looking for a true specialist, a true expert. And then, our belief is that the classroom teachers will develop their ability to deliver STEAM instruction and project-based learning. So, it'll be extended beyond that particular room, it'll be like a hybrid model, and then, in addition, if you recall, there'll be twenty percent of the teacher's time dedicated to helping all the teachers in Cottle with technology integration, instructional technology integration.
So, so it will be, or be a combination of both, where, let's say, the teacher teaches biology, for example, it's not really STEM, but, would then utilize the facility with the teacher-coach to maybe bring a point home about what they're learning in the classroom, is that how you see it?
Yes, yes, exactly.
And then also having a STEM class that's on, on its own, as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'll, some more later, about, give somebody else a chance.
Anyone else? Rob?
Just a few questions. Thank you for putting this all together, and he, as Michelle said, need a little time to digest it, and before our next meeting, probably some more questions, but, just a couple of, a quick ones, Carl, in regards to the AP course offering at the high school, I was just curious, what's the driver to determine which AP courses are offered? Like, is that by request, is that by availability of the teachers, like, what determines that?
You know, Rob, it, it's a combination. So, the teacher's expertise, so there is a very specific training to teach an AP course. We send our teachers to, you know, if, if there is a new teacher who's taking on an AP, we do send them to summer training. When an AP course changes, they, they do need to retrain and retool, so to speak. But we also base them on student interest, and, and the availability of staff, so it's a combination. You've heard us talk many times about, you know, typical Tuckahoe teacher, because we are so small, will teach multiple levels and, and various preps throughout the course of a day. So take Mr. Pappas, for example, who teaches a very, a very exciting AP psychology course, and, and many of our students attend that, he always has a, a packed classroom, year after year, but, but he is, he is a history teacher, you know, he is a global history teacher, he has a background in psychology, but also, the interest is there. So we kind of look at all of the above, I guess, is, is the answer to your question. I think the challenge comes when, when you do find some courses that have six or eight students interested. Sometimes, it just boils down to what fits into their schedule. So that also is a challenge. I believe we also, for example, for the languages, there, we are offering an online version of Italian. We have the ability to offer an AP class, but for one student who could not fit it in his schedule, we did offer an online version, with support from the school.
Okay. And then, in regards to the other courses that you mentioned, adding a section of chemistry, a section of global history honors, is, is, what was the driver there, is that enrollment, or purely enrollment?
Enrollment. If you look at the slide, year over year, the high school, this year, a two-eighty-seven, Rob, and we're projecting three-oh-seven next year, so about twenty, which is one section, twenty student increase, and therefore, and with the sciences, you know, especially something like chemistry, we have had times where, you know, we've had to, we didn't have the extra section, and we surpassed twenty-five in a class, and it does get a bit uncomfortable, and it's, it's not the best situation, so I think this will really help us balance out those class sizes.
Okay, thank you. One question in regards to, you mentioned about the Boses program, and I, I remember we've, we've probably spoken about this a few times over the years, and I think we brought this up once before, but I don't recall exactly what the response was. Is this a program that potentially, like, the transportation costs could be shared with other local districts, like if Rocksville, or Palom, or Eastchester, maybe to mitigate that, some of that transportation expense? Is that something that could be explored?
It's possible, and we won't know until each year, because what, we're in a consortium with the other districts around us. So they would set it up, that if there are other students, and the timing worked, that they could pick up the students from the different schools, and get them to the Boses program on time, we would share with them, but Boses does charge us by the number, by the student. So we don't, so there, there's a cost for the bus, and I'm focusing on this based on the cost for the individual student. If there are more and more students from other schools, we would share in that cost, but there's no guarantees that we'd be able to match the times and the, the room on the bus. So I budgeted worst-case scenario, in terms of what it might cost. It might be lower.
Because I remember, we did have some students participating, back a few years ago, I believe.
We did, and, and we do have currently some students that go as per their IEP. However, this is for-
And we transport them up there, as well?
We do, we do, and as Lee pointed out, it, it's a per-pupil cost. It varies year to year, if there are more students on the bus, the per-pupil cost drops. However, this is specifically for general education students, I want to be clear about that, and, and we did run the program, Rob, for, for many years. During a difficult budget, we stopped. There were students, it's a two-year program, there were students in the program that we felt an obligation to see through, through graduation, and, and the feedback was overwhelmingly positive. These are quality programs, the, the, the challenge is just the, the expense, the cost.
So they go junior and, and senior?
Yes.
How much instructional time do they get? Like, how many, how many hours are they spending there?
It's a, it's a half-day here, Peter, and then a half-day at Boses.
For the whole school year, junior and senior?
Yes, and they're still pursuing their region's diploma, and the idea that they will graduate with the region's diploma. The other, the other piece of this, and let me just collect my thoughts here, is, I talked about the transportation of this, oh my goodness, I apologize, I had a thought, based on Rob's question, and I lost it, so if it comes back to me. Oh, the other, the other point of this that I want to make is, we spend a certain amount of dollars per pupil, so if they're out of the school, there is no savings, and that came up in some of our internal discussions, because, for example, if, if, if there's an afternoon class, an English class, with, with twenty-two students, and two of them end up going to Boses, and I have twenty, there is no savings there. We're still paying the same teacher to teach twenty or twenty-two. So that question does come up, and I just wanted to be clear about that, you know, just because they're going out, there is no savings here. You still have your per-pupil cost, and this is on top of that, and there's no legal responsibility to do it. However, for your non-traditional students, these programs can be released.
Well, I mean, that, that's kind of where, I guess, I was, my thought process led me to, to ask about it. I mean, this would be a good example of providing all of our students an equal opportunity to learn. So, you know, these, like you said, these are for certain types of students, where, are there other programs that could be offered similar to this, for students who have interest in these types of programs, other than Boses offers, that maybe are less, are more cost-effective?
You know, Rob, not, not really, we, we do offer a very high-quality internship program, but, but it's, but it's, it's not as extensive as this, this is two full years. These are for, for students really bound for careers in, in the trades. You know, the other option too, is, is, you know, and this does align with, with our, with our goals, you know, we talk about diverse, meeting the needs of diverse learners, and they're good, good quality careers in the trades. You know, it doesn't have to be five, and what we also discussed internally was, what if we only, let's say, put, budgeted for two spots, and what if four students apply? But what I, what I spoke to Dr. Linehan, and the guidance, the high school guidance department about is, I would insist on a vocational evaluation, for anyone who was interested in, in going, and there would need to be a selection process. And it does mean that maybe a student who had a desire to participate in this program would get turned away, if we, we think five would, for the most part, cover the maximum amount of students interested. In a given year, you may only send three, you know, we are a small school. So I, I do think this is something that the Board certainly could consider a lower number, if, if you chose to do so, but I thought it would, it really ought to be, and, and Dr. Linehan has recommended this, pretty much ever since we, we discontinued funding it. He's been asking year after year, and he's advocating for, for all of his students, and that, that is his role, and I respect that.
Right. But I think then, it does get difficult with the selection process, because what he's advocating for is, is an opportunity, an equal opportunity for all of his students, that then, because it's, you know, budgeted for two, or three, or five, I think that becomes limiting, and makes it more difficult. So, there's a lot to consider there, you know?
Yes.
It's a tough one, because we do, of course we want to. We want, we want every, we want to offer everything to everyone, and, and that's why these are, are difficult decisions to make. I also had a, a couple of questions, a little bit along those lines. The high school electives, I'm very excited to see some additional electives being offered, and I was wondering how, and you, you said, you know, it's possible there could be others, but how did we come upon these, and are there others that touch on some of the vocational opportunities, that then maybe twenty students might be interested in taking, rather than, I, I know it's a totally different program than what's offered at Boses, and I know that those are great programs, but I, as a board member, I've been up there, I've been to that facility, it's really amazing what goes on there. But, are there electives that, because these students are also still here getting a region's diploma, that we could offer electives in-house, it would be a lot less expensive?
Maybe online.
And there could be more students who might be interested, also. So, I mean, it, maybe it would be good to know, what are the programs- So, I mean, maybe it would be good to know, what are the programs that our students in the past have taken there? What are, you know, and some of the offerings? I don't know. I have no idea.
Yeah. And you know, going back to Rob's question, it is somewhat similar to APs, you know, how do you decide which? The schedule is playing out right now. You do try to gauge student interest, that's a function of the guidance department. I did my, and I'll present to you, I believe I'm on for next meeting, the senior exit interviews. They did express an interest in, now, of course, they're moving on, but they, they're giving me feedback based on their experience. They did express an interest in a more, a wider variety of electives. So what I can do for next meeting, or maybe in your Friday update, is just, you know, give you what we're planning for next year. And if you'd like, now, the problem too, though, is scheduling.
Scheduling is a challenge. That's always been a challenge.
So Dr. Linehan has always, you know, I come up with ideas, you know, one was, the students talked about financial literacy. And I researched a program out of Columbia, which is all case study program. And what you do is, there's no certification in that area, but if you have a, you have a math teacher with solid skills, they spend a week down at Columbia over the summer, they get certified by Columbia. And this is very aligned with the Columbia MBA program, which is all done by case studies. Most of the Ivy League MBA programs are taught that way. And I ran to Dr. Linehan and said, gee, you know, should we consider maybe adding one more? We had a good discussion about it, maybe a math teacher. So where we landed was if we have a math teacher, potentially, he's still working through the schedule, that we can, you know, free up for one period. And maybe that means, you know, instead of having two, two sections of 14, you have one section of 28, which is a bit high, depends on the subject. And maybe free up that person to do an additional elective. So we're trying to find it within. I didn't want to go on record as saying we're offering it to our community, and that's why it's not in the slides. But I think we are continuing to look for a wider variety of electives, but we're small. And that makes it a challenge.
Also, with the electives, are the students, like, not just the seniors, but are, like, with middle school and high school, are they sort of polled to see what they're interested in or given like sort of a category of list to choose from?
But I don't think they're polled, Cynthia, simply because the people who are offering the electives, you know, they've developed a curriculum and a program. So, you know, I think every, we're gauging interest, but it's not based on every year we change it. You know, there are some of these electives actually are, you know, have, you know, done really well over time and do have a high level of interest. But I think we do need to rethink, you know, those that are not drawing the students.
Right.
We offer a lot of art, you know, traditional art and that, you know, that is something where we try, architecture, it has the word art in it, but it is different. We're envisioning-
Well, I've already heard, my son came home talking about it, the class, thinking, I might want to take that.
Yeah. There was a lot of interest and I, we have a very competent teacher in mind.
Yes.
Who-
I think that's why he wants it.
Everything he does, he does exceptionally well.
It's going to be a bad start.
It's like, you know, it's that kind of thought process, who's available, who has that area of expertise, who is willing to develop a curriculum over the summer? And-
Well, I was thinking the same thing with some of these AP courses. If, say, for example, one of these teachers are not here, who is an AP teacher, are then we considering whoever that new teacher is going to be, investing in getting them the certification they need to teach it? Or does that class then just get dropped?
I'm sorry, I don't fully understand the question.
Well, for some of these classes, and I don't want to say much, but for, if the AP teacher is not here and when a new teacher is hired-
Then they would be trained.
Then they would be teaching that class.
Uh-huh. They would be trained, that's what I'm asking.
Well, they have to be trained, yeah.
Okay.
The AP is very prescribed.
Or would it be that, oh, sorry, person's not trained, now we can't offer the class?
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
But like any, like anything else, you know, an AP course, you know, the first year, there's a bit of a learning curve. Even after you're trained, okay? And you're following a curriculum, it does take time to develop that expertise and these are challenging courses.
I would think that the high school electives are a challenge even in a bigger district. So, you know, I'd be interested to know, what is Pelham offering? What is Eastchester offering? Is there a way that we could work together? You know, maybe there's a teacher we share who comes here for, you know, to, I know that scheduling is always difficult, but, you know, a creative way of adding more and having someone who specializes in it. Because I, instead of having to work within, you know, what we're already offering-
Could they Skype into the classes and things like that?
I don't know. I would want to know, for me, I think what's interesting is what are our neighboring districts offering?
Mm-hmm.
And I think that would be a start.
We can get you that information, for sure.
With the labs, which I was excited about, the math labs, because I think that we've always offered more for literacy and I think math labs are a great idea. I, and then I realized, oh, it's only for sixth grade. Like, why was that decision made only for the sixth grade?
I think Mr. Stiefel and the math department, the thinking behind that, and I know he spent some time down at Cottle with, with middle school math teachers, speaking with the Cottle math teachers, particularly grade five.
Right.
And I think his thought process there, as I said earlier, is Cottle, and I looked at this a number of years ago, it's not an exact, but they spend at least an hour and 10 to an hour and 15 minutes a day on average in math. And that's a big drop-off to go down to 48 minutes daily. Right now, the current middle school students in grade six, they've had Common Core math from kindergarten. When we implemented some math labs about four or five years ago, and it was actually my recommendation, it was because Common Core was being phased in and we had students entering middle school who had no foundational learning in Common Core. I thought it was very irresponsible, the way the state rolled it out, and, and we believe they needed extra support. There just wasn't enough time in their schedule. And that, that helped. It helped. It was still a very stressful time for students and families. And there was a lot of pushback, as you know, on the rollout of Common Core, you'll remember. But our, our thought process was when we phased it out, I think it was at least one year, maybe two years ago, I'd have to go back and look. But when we phased it out, the current middle school students have had Common Core all the way through. And we thought they'd be able to make that transition with the, with the lower amount of instructional time. But it's a challenge still. Covering the curriculum is a challenge. And that's what we're hearing from the teachers, as well as the administrators, as well as Dr. McDonald, who's in charge of curriculum and instruction and has, is a real true math expert. So this is coming from them as a recommendation. The question, I guess, is why not seventh? Foreign language kicks in in seventh grade. So again, you struggle, there's only, everyone would benefit from more instructional time and, but there's only so many hours in the day and that's when the foreign language classes kick in in, you know, seventh and eighth and through high school. So-
No, I was just curious to look at, because it's also a different curriculum that's being used. So they're using Envisions all the way up, and Envisions is offered for middle school. So is it the actual, the curriculum being used or the amount of time? So I'm just, yeah, I don't know.
Well, I would say-
I don't really know what the answer is either.
I would say a period a week.
So the labs would be-
Technically 48 minutes, okay, times 40 weeks is 30, at least a little over 30 hours. You give me 30 hours with a child, whether I'm using Envisions, whether I'm using some other program, give me 30 hours of direct instruction, you'll get better results.
And how many, it's going to be, the labs are going to be how many times a week for?
I believe this is for once a week. So it's one additional period, and I'll confirm that. I mean, this, you're drilling down and these are great questions, by the way, but I, you know, a lot of this, Lee talked about earlier, there's been a real collaborative process. You know, these are not me top-down recommendations. This is, you know, you really want to speak to the people that are delivering the instruction. I believe it's one per week in addition. So they would get six periods a week of math. And again, that equates to over 30 hours annually, which is significant.
I had another question regarding the guidance counselor, social worker, K to 12. I thought that was interesting, what you said earlier about the state now, is it a mandate? Could you, could you just talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely. I said earlier, I don't always agree with the state's initiatives, but in the area of SEL, I think it's one of the best initiatives to come out of state ed in years. They're spot-on, I think, with what they are asking schools to do. And there is a requirement that there is direct guidance instruction for children. And that, I mean, it's basically SEL instruction. That's what it is. So it is a requirement. Now, it doesn't mean elementary schools are required to have a guidance counselor.
Right.
You don't have to do that. Most districts have, have addressed this, though, by adding elementary guidance counselors. What we're hoping for here is someone who either has, we'd like to advertise it as guidance certification required, additional social worker certification preferred. And if we don't find someone with dual cert, what we would like is at least someone who is motivated to pursue additional social work training and maybe even another master's degree in social work. So I think that would be perfect. I also would like to see someone who potentially is bilingual, because we envision that person going into homes, supporting families. But, you know, that, that's my idea of what the ideal candidate would look like, but, but we haven't, you know, we haven't taken that step. The budget's first and then we would get out there and start to advertise if it's approved.
Okay. Anything, and the other thing, Leah, about the money. When we look at the amount being recommended to take from fund balance next year, it's basically $2 million. So, two things. One is the ERS reserve. I know you don't, you're not giving us a fund balance summary with this. So are we still contributing every year into the, is, do we have a line item to contribute into the ERS reserve every year?
No. What we have done in the past is if the district ran a surplus, we would put monies in the various reserves that we had. So we started the ERS reserve with $100,000 two years ago. And then last year, we put, I believe, $70,000 more into that reserve and then we've earned some interest over the last two years as well.
So there isn't, so we don't know how we would replenish it? It would only be if there's surplus?
Right.
Okay.
Sure, mine, what are the main drivers of surpluses, like?
Well, we're very conservative with our out-of-district students that tuition in. So if we get extra students that tuition in, more than we budget, that would be surplus. Or if we are, again, on the other side of the balance sheet, if we are conservative about how much we spend on special education students or any other line item, and then we underspend it, we'll re, excuse me, we'll receive surplus there as well.
So Peter, for example, we, we have six additional special education, non-resident tuition students. And what that means is their district-
Right.
-is paying the full expense of them being here.
I understand.
And I'm doing this a little bit for our public as well.
Oh, yeah.
I do know you don't. No, no. And I know, I know you know. But anyway, the, so, but there were six and Lee did not budget expecting those six. They, during the budget process, we really, quite frankly, had no idea. They applied, we do get a number, our special education programs are, you know, have a great reputation. Referrals come in. We take a very small percentage of the overall referrals, but we do consider a number, if they're not a perfect fit for our classes, then we say no. But if they are a good fit and the revenue is there and we have the space, it's a win-win. And, but Lee cannot budget expecting it because there are no guarantees year after year. But this past year, we did do well. I am looking forward to finding, finding out as faith, I think by next meeting, Lee?
By next meeting, we'll have it.
We will have a better projection this year, what will return into fund balance. And that may help you with, you know, the budget as well.
I think that, you know, we're a little conflicted. We talk about this fund balance and the reserves and it's, it's good news. I mean, it's good news that we've been able to do this and it's, it's really such efforts on you, Carl, and, and the support staff for bringing in the students for the special education tuition students who pay to come into our district. It though creates a little bit of uncertainty also, because not knowing year to year what we're going to have, it's hard to spend, to plan how to, to budget that money and how to spend it. So while we would love to put it into all, you know, new staffing, new programs, we also need to be able to, you know, be conservative with that because we don't want to then have a conversation down the road where we're going to have to say, okay, wait a second, we can't afford that now. And, you know, maybe it would be interesting to know, the special education students that are tuitioned in now, what years are they in? You know, are they-
We track that as well. I'll bring that too as well.
Right. That would also be, you know, good to know. Because if they're in the elementary school, which we know that there are, you know, I don't know the number and where they fall this year.
They're staggered throughout the district. But we track them, so if we anticipate that they're graduating, of course, Lee-
Then we're not going to count them, right.
Lee takes them out of the budget.
Right, we take them out.
Right. Look, it's, it's impressive. It really is impressive where that, those reserves have increased and the revenues coming in from those placements. But again, makes it difficult to plan for. And when we talk about how we have used the fund balance over the past years, when you look at what you've provided us in that one slide where it did go down in 16, 17, that was intentional. Because at that time, the thought process was to try to plan to reduce the dependency on the fund balance. But then we find ourselves in a position where we have, you know, a higher reserve and that's taxpayer money and we don't want to be holding on to that. So of course, we want to give it back to our students. It makes sense to give it back again, but I think the balance and the uncertainty of it is something we really need to be cautious about. Anybody else? Anything else? Okay. So we will talk again about the budget at our next meeting, March 19th. I'm sure we will all come back, 18th, I'm sorry, is it the 18th?
I believe the 18th.
Monday, the 18th?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, Monday, March 18th, there will be a regular meeting of the Board of Education. I'm sure we will all come back with some more questions for you and we'll take a deeper look into everything that you've provided. I know a tremendous amount of work. Thank you, Lee, very much, and Carl, for everything that's gone. It's really, I think, so encouraging to see how the initiatives line up with the strategic goals. I mean, to really see what is being planned for and what is being asked for and then, and then the way you're supporting it in the budget, I really think is very impressive and I, and I really have to applaud you for that. We do have one quick business item, right? Let's take care of that. Okay. Let's see where we are. Okay, so we just had our initial budget presentation. We're going to move now forward with business of the board. Educational service agreement, resolve to approve a service district agreement for the 2018-19 school year with the, is it Deveraux Foundation through the Deveraux New York Treatment Network and Children's Residential Project. And that is for one student. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second P, discussion? All in favor? Okay. We are now going to go to executive session, so we're not going to adjourn our meeting and we will see everyone back here Monday, March 18th. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.